The benefit. Well, good morning. We're gonna go ahead and call to order the September tenth meeting of Placer County Board of Supervisors. We're gonna begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a pledge to our nation's flag. If you'll stand and join Mr. Leopold in leading us in the pledge.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
You'll notice that we are down two supervisors for this meeting. Supervisor Weigant had a previously scheduled vacation. Unfortunately Supervisor Gustafson had to travel to Arizona due to the passing of her stepmother. So, we're down to three of us. I hope my colleagues took advantage of the facilities prior to this starting because if any one of us gets up and leaves, we have to suspend the meeting because we will have lost a quorum at that point. So, we'll go ahead and jump into it with the consent agenda. Any items on consent that either of my colleagues would like removed for discussion?
I have none.
Alright, any members of the public want anything on consent removed for discussion? Anybody wanna pull that elections item and talk about that a little bit? How much money we're spending on special elections these days? No, no one wants to talk about that? Oh, okay. Alright, do we have a motion on consent?
Second.
We have a motion, Holmes, second Gore. Roll call, please.
Gore?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler.
Aye with Weigant and Gustafson absent. Thank you very much. This is a time for public comment. Folks may address the board on any item not on our agenda, knowing that we cannot take action on items raised under public comment. If you choose to address the board, please do step forward, identify yourself, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anybody wanna take advantage of this opportunity for public comment? Yes ma'am, step right on up.
Okay, a little nervous, give me just a minute.
Sure. First thing we're gonna need is your name for the record, once you're ready to start.
Good morning, my name is Catherine Holt and thank you Chairman Euler and members of the supervisor team and friends. I appreciate having the opportunity to be here today. If I go too long, cut me off, give me a timeout, and I can, I can mind.
It'll just beep at you, you'll know.
For the past several years, Placer County Supervisors have issued proclamations specific to suicide prevention, and you guys have been the risk takers and the change agents, setting the standard, not only for this county, but in the entire state of California, and the nation has followed suit because of what you've done. You've actually made national news by giving these proclamations. So, I wanted to thank you. By issuing, issuing the proclamations, what you've done is you've helped promote positive mental awareness. And I don't know if Amy Ellis or Jeff Brown are here from the Health and Human Services Department. When I first talked to you five, six years ago, it was kinda Health and Human Services that did mental health and suicide prevention. They have done a phenomenal job, hitting each and every department and talking about how to help the community and county in general. Suicide Prevention Month, the National Suicide Prevention Month is in fact this month, September. Additionally, Soldier Suicide Prevention Month is also this month. That includes active and reserved, and I was corrected by your brother the other night, Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, Coast Guard, and Marines. He wanted me to get that out. So, this week, September eighth through the fourteenth is Suicide Prevention Week, and September tenth is World Suicide Prevention Day. So, today is World Suicide Prevention Day, which is supported by the World Health Organization. Right now, in this audience, we have somebody who is a legend among us, Harriet Salerno. I'd like to invite her up just to stand next to me while I talk to you for a minute. Harriet, if you wouldn't mind. Ladies and gentlemen, Harriet Salerno. She is the CEO and founder of Crime Victims United of California. Sorry, I just kinda lost my thought here. Harriet's daughter was executed on September third, forty years ago, so she just had an angel anniversary, angel anniversary recently. The gentleman, not only did Harriet have to bury her child and say goodbye, she had to endure an investigation, then she had to go through trial. The jury came back with a verdict that said guilty, no chance of parole. Harriet has been to the parole board eleven times so far, even with the jury's verdict. So, what she has done is she picked September as the month to do the largest fundraising event for Crime Victims United of California. They're based right here out of Auburn, and that's the Third Annual American Rib Cook-Off, which is Saturday, September twenty-eighth. But she's proactively got involved in helping people with post-traumatic stress. And by proactive, what I mean is she's invited the honor group, who helps veterans, the, the idea is twenty-two veterans a day take their lives. That statistic is wrong, it is closer to forty to forty-three a day, active and reserved. She also invited the Not OK Project, that's a project that deals with first responders, law enforcement, firemen, doctors and nurses. Crime Victims United supports law enforcement five-hundred percent and stands behind them, their spouses, and children. So, I'm just excited that she's proactive in doing this, and I wanted to introduce her to you and spread the word about some of the things that are happening right here in Auburn, right here in Placer County, in the state of California, and nationally. We were hoping for a proclamation being issued to Crime Victims United of California because of her work in advance of recognizing PTS and dealing with it prior to suicide, cuz she is saving lives each and every day, as have each and every one of you by issuing the proclamations on recognizing mental health awareness and suicide prevention. So, from my heart, I wanna thank you for your love and compassion and the positions that you have taken. I genuinely appreciate each and every one of you, and God bless you. God bless our first responders. I know Sheriff Devon Bell and his team are in the back, and now I have a really unique and unusual request. Harriet sometimes doesn't come out often, and she's a little bit shy. I was hoping all of you might come down for a few minutes. I got permission from the chair, and take a quick picture with Harriet, so that she has a picture that will memorialize this moment. So, if you wouldn't mind, would everybody come down and help out?
Sure.
That includes you too, Mr. Todd.
I'm gonna take a picture, ask Beverly to take a picture.
Yeah. See how awesome she is?
Next door, can't watch her go right next to her.
Oh, don't be embarrassed.
You coming in?
I'm coming in.
Alright. Wherever.
I'll stand between you two guys.
Okay, I know I'm done, but I wanna thank you so much, cuz that was a special moment.
Thank you.
We're not gonna stay that long, cuz she's got another appointment, but again, God bless you and everybody in the room. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else here in Auburn under public comment? Not seeing anybody here in Auburn. Now, what about in Tahoe? Do we have anybody in Tahoe? Nobody in Tahoe under public comment? Alright, great. Okay. Board member and county executive reports. Any member of the board have anything?
I have.
Report? No? Alright, moving on. Alright, our nine oh five timed item, this is a commendation. Kathleen Finley, we're gonna invite you forward, please. Now Kathleen, this is that uncomfortable time when you just have to stand there while I read this entire thing, after which you will be given the opportunity for a brief rebuttal, should there be anything on here with what you disagree, or anything that you just wanna be able to say about Devon Bell.
Thank you.
You'll be given that opportunity as well.
Can I have more than three minutes?
You, absolutely. If, if you're launching into Devon, you take all the time you want. Alright, in the matter of commendation, recognizing Kathleen Finley for thirty-two years of dedicated public service as an employee of the Placer County Sheriff's Office, whereas Kathleen Finley is retiring from the Placer, from the County of Placer office of the sheriff after serving that agency and the citizens of this county for thirty-two years. Kathy, is that Kathy okay if I call you Kathy?
Absolutely.
Kathy was hired as a public safety dispatcher at North Lake Tahoe Station, demonstrating a high level of proficiency and competence, and becoming a role model for her peers. Her supervisors found her to be approachable, open-minded, and particularly successful at establishing and maintaining good relationships, often extending herself to assist and support her coworkers. Kathy transitioned to a position in the sheriff's information technology unit. With her extensive knowledge of dispatching, Kathy was well-prepared to work with vendors and support of many sheriff's systems. She conducted herself with confidence and listened carefully. She was articulate and persuasive, and she actively sought the absolute best possible outcome. Kathy took on several large projects, including technical support for radio, the new sheriff's mobile command vehicle, upgrading the P-25 digital radio system, and overseeing the new computer-aided dispatch mobile project. Each of these projects was highly complex, having a direct impact on sheriff's day-to-day operations, the safety of our community, and the welfare of our employees. Whereas Kathleen Finley's dedication to the office of sheriff and to the citizens of the community has been exemplary, she has performed with professionalism and conscientious attention to duty throughout her career. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by this Board of Supervisors, the County of Placer regularly held meeting on September tenth, 2019, on behalf of citizens of Placer County. The Board of Supervisors acknowledge with great appreciation the exceptional service of Kathleen Finley, and wish her well in her retirement and future pursuits. I will present this as soon as we have a motion and a second to approve it.
We have approval.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you. It's my pleasure to present this to you.
I'm official.
Take as many as you want. Devon's here, I'll bet. Okay, lady, gentleman, the floor is yours.
Mine, oh goodness. It's been a really good run. Thirty-two years, three months to the day. Working for that guy and Sheriff Ed Bonner, so I'm grateful, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell, did you wanna add anything?
Um, sure. Kathy's one of the few folks who've been in the offices longer, longer than, than I have. When I promoted to sergeant, went up to Lake Tahoe, she was our dispatch supervisor, and she, or dispatcher, and she was that person at the other, at the end of the radio, providing calm, clear direction, and then she transitioned into the IT thing, and I'm not gonna go through all of her stuff. I'll say, I'll say this about Kathy. She is a wonderful, wonderful person, great human being, and I wish her a long and healthy retirement, and I'm not exactly sure what we're gonna do without her, actually. She's been here thirty-two years. I tell you this, somebody is naturally going to succeed Kathy, but nobody's ever gonna replace her, so, thank you.
Thank you, Devon. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on with our agenda. Our nine-ten timed item is a Health and Human Services item. This is a presentation of September nineteen, twenty-nineteen, as Recovery Month in Placer County.
Good morning.
Morning.
Supervisor Euler and members of the board, Todd. I'm Amy Ellis with the Director of Adult System of Care, and I'm here with some members of my substance use team back there in purple, and the Mental Health, Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board members, a couple of them, and, and some others that are here to, to support September as National Recovery Month. This year, we're honoring it by highlighting our improved access and quality of substance use services in Placer County, and here to invite you to some community events that celebrate this year's theme, "Join the Voices of Recovery, for Together We Are Stronger." In the last two years, we have increased access to life-saving and effective substance use treatment in Placer County. While I will not be able to go into a great amount of detail on all of these slides, I'm happy to do more presentations or meet with you individually to further describe our services. So today, we'll focus on adult substance use services and discuss the Drug-Medicale Organized Delivery System, who we serve, how services are accessed, data and other accomplishments over the last two years, local activities honoring recovery and suicide awareness, and we'll also be honored to hear from someone with loved experience later. Placer County went live with the organized delivery system on November first, 2018. This allowed us for increased federal funding toward treatment, ability to claim for additional services, such as residential treatment, case management, field-based services, and additional one-on-one support for, for people, among other things. It also allowed for a more organized approach to screening and determining level of care needs by the use of a statewide tool, the ACM, and by creating more accountability and oversight of the programs we contract with. So, counties typically act as the managed care plan, so to speak, for the medicale residents in need of substance use services. This means that we're responsible to screen and connect individuals to the appropriate level of treatment that will ultimately be provided by our contracted providers that are listed here on this slide. We're also responsible for ensuring the quality of the services offered at those sites. In addition to that requirement, Placer County also provides case management to help support treatment for some special populations that will be outlined in future slides. So, about forty-four percent of all of our referrals to substance use treatment are from our criminal justice system, from probation, parole, or law enforcement. Another twelve percent is from other agencies that kind of compel individuals into treatment, such as our Child Welfare Services, or our housing programs, et cetera. And seventeen percent are coming because family members or friends are concerned about them, and twenty-six percent come on their own, asking for help. So, this kinda paints the story of kind of what we encounter as we, as we interact with them, as we screen them, and try to connect them to these services. So while a majority of people are coming in for the, some type of compelled reason, we know that treatment does still work. It just takes more than one treatment attempt for most, as they move through the stages of change. All individuals who come to the screening clinic are linked to many other services that they need, such as mental health care, or benefits, or health, or housing, and more. To increase the support and success of these individuals, additional case management and support is added when we have a grant or funding source that exists to, to do this. For example, the criminal justice population, we have several additional supports tailored to improve outcomes. We have collaborative courts, and HHS staff embedded in probation and on law enforcement teams. We go into custody to link individuals to treatment upon discharge, among other things, many programs that I've come and shared at your board prior. We also, outside of the criminal justice system, have targeted prevention activities to youth and older adults. We also provide outreach and specialized care to pregnant and parenting women who need a different type of care. We also have a co-occurring for severely mentally ill and substance-using individuals, because they have individualized needs, and we have embedded staff in our CalWorks program that helps people alleviate their challenges so they can go back to work. These are key areas where engagement and access to care are low without this additional type of support. Placer County offers screening clinics five days a week in various locations throughout the county, included embedded in our prep centers at probation. We have an integrated care approach so that individuals' needs for substance use services are screened within the Children's System of Care, mental health programs, and more. We have a no-wrong-door philosophy to match people to their needs regardless of where we encounter them throughout our system. So due to our, our outreach efforts, we touch or connect with or talk to over two, two thousand residents in a year to screen and offer substance use treatment. Many of them are not yet ready for change, therefore nine hundred and sixty-seven of them were admitted to treatment, and only sixty-three percent of those did successfully complete treatment, although that actually is a pretty high completion rate across the state, I will acknowledge. And of those who simply enter treatment, even if they didn't complete, eighty-one percent report being better able to do things in life as a result. In some of our specialized programs, we see even more specific outcomes, such as that forty-seven of our action team participants, only two of them have received a new conviction. And fifty-seven percent of our drug court participants successfully graduate, and many go on to obtain employment, maintain their sobriety, and exit the criminal justice system for good. We get to hear these stories at our annual graduations in May, where many of them come back year after year to support new graduates. This year, our nineteenth annual Recovery Happens event will take place on September twenty-first. We invite all of you to come to this family-friendly barbecue to support those who are living life in recovery. In addition, as we heard previously, September is also National Suicide Prevention Week and Soldier Suicide Prevention Month. There are several walks and fundraisers planned by community organizations taking place. Health and Human Services and our staff really want to encourage individuals to participate in any effort that they are passionate about, and I wanna personally thank our wonderful community volunteers and other organizations who do excellent work to support these efforts in addition to the county. We are now very privileged to hear from Miranda Lowe about her personal journey of recovery.
My name is Miranda Lowe. I am super nervous, which doesn't actually happen often. I've been in recovery for over six years now. Just a brief background, I am a product of a drug-induced environment. I'm also the product of a paranoid schizophrenic mother who was very abusive. I come from adverse childhood experiences, including very physical violent abuse, including sexual abuse. I was a runaway at a very young age, age thirteen, and became a victim of circumstances of the streets and my environment very quickly. I have two children who were born tox-positive later on in life, and one child who wasn't born tox-positive, but definitely shows some very serious mental health conditions considering the environment that I raised my children in. I do a lot of volunteering in our community. When I moved here in 2013, I moved here by myself. Fortunately for me, I had had four interventions by Child Welfare Services, and that was my fourth intervention in 2013. I was very fortunate to have been culturally identified as a Native American household, so the rules for my family were just a little bit different in the reunification process for my family. When I came here, I was very scared, I was very frightened, I was addicted to methamphetamines, and I had left a very violent, very dangerous domestic violence relationship, as I had always had my entire life before that. And when I got here, I was met by so many providers in Placer County. I was met by social workers who maybe had large caseloads, but gave me attention. I was met by volunteers who intended to support good people who go through big struggles. Moving forward, I'm now raising children who are recovering from their childhood, because they were a victim of circumstances of the lifestyle that I lived in addiction. I have a child who has disassociative disorder, and when she's not regulated on her meds, attempts suicide. I have a child who had been diagnosed with reactive attachment disorder and requires a very serious IEP through his school. I have, you know, another child who has attention deficit disorder, and so the three different disorders are very active at very different times. What I can say, though, is coming to Placer County and meeting the providers, meeting the people who mean, who intend to provide services to good people who go through struggles, is what made the difference in my life. I volunteer for CWS right now. I help with an orientation class for parents who are new to that system, and the number one thing that I share with those parents is that they are in the best county for rehabilitation. I'm now an educator for drug and alcohol services. I'm, I'm a drug and alcohol counselor. I only came into this line of work not because, I didn't start out because I wanted to help people. I started out because I was overwhelmed with the help that I received in this county. I don't really get emotional much, but I was overwhelmed with the amount of mentorship that met me at the ground level of my addiction, at the ground level of how nasty of a woman and mother that I was when I got here from the domestic violence. I was blindly fighting everyone all the time, and I met people like Amy Ellis, who had a lot of big words that I didn't understand, but I just wanted to know so badly what she meant. You know, I met people in the Children's System of Care Department who were in charge of the outcome of my family's future, but they didn't treat me like I had done something wrong. They treated me like I was a mother who had an opportunity in front of me, and they paired me with all of the services that were available. And now, like I said, I raise children who are recovering from their childhood. I am so fortunate, my whole family is fortunate to have an unnumberable amount of services at our fingertips because of the mentorship that was given to me. I know that there's no end for rehabilitation in Placer County. I know that there is always someone, somewhere, who's willing to provide that opportunity for my family, and I actually ended up with a, a new teenager that I'm getting ready to adopt, who comes from, her mother passed away from an overdose, so she comes from the environment that I, that I remember, but don't have to be stuck in anymore. I just, I just love Placer County, I absolutely adore all of the, the people in charge, the supervisors, the social workers, the treatment providers, the facilities, every one of them, even with any type of deficit that anyone may be able to find. We have an amazing recovery support in Placer County. And, I mean, if I could just bring every person that needed rehab into Placer County, I would totally just bring them in by the busloads. You know, this is the county, if you're gonna get help, it's in this county, and if it's gonna make a difference, it's in this county. You know, I don't have a, a perfect life, but I'm able to enjoy all of my family members. I've got restored relationships, and I've got new partnerships in the community. That's something that I never would've thought I ever would've been, been able to access or, or even enjoy. So, thank you guys very much. I thank all of our community providers and our partners, and Amy, thank you for, for mentoring me and bringing me along this way. I just, I'm just so thankful for Placer County.
Thank you, thank you for sharing. Mr. Carroll.
She's amazing. I met her.
Supervisor Holmes.
I wanted to give some comments to Miranda. We understand that overcoming addiction is a tremendous challenge, and you had four interventions. I just wanna thank you for never giving up and coming through, and I wanna thank Amy and the HHS staff for wrapping around and leading you through this, and I appreciate that you're now an advocate and counselor, because the best counselors are those who have lived the experience. So, thank you for coming forward, and I appreciate your, your ability to. So, thank you for coming forward, and I appreciate your ability to speak to us. Thank you.
So, yeah, so we just want to round out with inviting you again to come to Recovery Happens. You'll hear more stories like Miranda's. They're inspirational, and they really do make it worth it. I mean, I wanted to share those statistics to let you know the work is hard, and it does sometimes take multiple treatment attempts. But I do think what makes Placer County unique and special is all of those specialized programs and outreach and connections and collaborations that we have across our departments, with our criminal justice partners, with Children's System of Care, with Human Services, with any other organization. They partner so well to really help find and connect and wrap services around people so that they kind of come into the treatment and be able to recover. So, thank you so much for your time. We do, would hope to have everyone come up for a picture for, to celebrate Recovery Month, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and take our 9:25 timed item. This also is a Health and Human Services item. This is our Older Adult Advisory Commission Annual Report and Five-Year Plan. Morning.
Good morning, Chair Euler and members of the board. My name is Colby Hightoff, and I'm a manager with Health and Human Services Adult System of Care. We have two items to present to you today, and the first, I will be providing an update regarding Placer County's five-year plan for meeting the needs of a growing senior population. Then Jamie Horning, Chair of the Older Adult Advisory Commission, will be providing their annual report. Placer County's five-year plan for meeting the needs of a growing senior population was presented to your board in January 2017 and was based on the World Health Organization's Global Age Friendly Cities Project and the AARP Liveable Community Survey. Eight key domains of community life for older adults were identified and used to define communities as age-friendly. The Older Adult Advisory Commission is the voice of Placer County older adults and has taken a lead role in developing and supporting the implementation of the county plan. The OAAC has prioritized four of the eight domains as significant areas of focus in Placer County. The four domains are Communication and Information, Transportation, Housing, and Community and Health Services. These domains were assigned to commission members for further needs assessment and advocacy and are focus of the OAAC's annual report. Health and Human Services, or HHS, has continued to support the OAAC and take steps to implement the five-year plan through the course of its work in the prioritized domains. I'd like to highlight some of that work for you. In regards to Communication and Information, we have identified that there is a significant need to raise awareness of and participation in the many resources, programs, and services available to Placer County older adults. Some older adults are not tech savvy, they don't utilize the internet or have access to it, and prefer to pick up the phone and speak to someone when they need help. With recent direction from your board, HHS is moving forward with the implementation of a 2-1-1 information and referral system. The 2-1-1 system will provide the sustainable centralized point of entry for information and assistance that is greatly needed by older adults in Placer County. As the 2-1-1 system is developed, it is recommended that there be partnership with current older adult information and assistance providers. Such partnership will incorporate the comprehensive knowledge of local resources that the current providers possess, resulting in a more effective 2-1-1 referral for older adults. The number of homeless older adults is on the rise in California due to several factors, including financial instability, isolation, illness, and a lack of affordable housing. The January 2019 Placer County Homeless Point in Time Count found that 16% of those counted were adults 60 years or older. Moreover, there were 88 clients over the age of 65 on the county's Homeless Management and Information System database who are experiencing homelessness and awaiting more permanent housing. As a leader in homeless outreach, intake, and assessment, HHS manages several unique programs that serve older adults who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Whole Person Care is a program that coordinates physical health, behavioral health, and social services for at-risk individuals who are high users of multiple services, such as hospital emergency rooms, jail, and psychiatric facilities. Full Service Partnership provides intensive services to individuals with a serious mental illness, and these services include crisis residential, rent subsidies, and other supports that augment the HHS continuum of care provided to individuals at risk of or experiencing homelessness. In December of 2018, Placer County was one of 15 counties selected by the state to implement a new homelessness prevention and early intervention grant program for older adults and people with disabilities titled Homesafe. Each month, the Adult Protective Services Program receives approximately 167 new cases. Many of these cases involve an older adult who is at risk of losing their housing or has recently become homeless as a result of financial exploitation, physical abuse, or caregiver neglect. The Homesafe program enables trained Adult Protective Services staff to provide short-term housing crisis intervention. Interventions can include short-term rental and utility assistance, hoarding interventions such as cleaning services, mental health treatment, intensive case management, and more. Homesafe launched on July 1st of this year and has assisted 14 clients and spent approximately $16,535 to circumvent homelessness for these vulnerable adults. With respect to community and health services, there's a wealth of resources available to support each, to support and enrich the lives of older adults in Placer County. HHS administers several programs designed to help older adults live as comfortably, safely, and independently as possible. HHS manages the In-Home Supportive Services Program, which helps pay for care services provided to older adults and people with disabilities so they can remain safely in their own home. IHSS currently serves approximately 3,548 consumers residing in Placer County. HHS also manages the IHSS Public Authority. The Public Authority acts as the employer of record for approximately 3,410 IHSS care providers in Placer County and maintains a registry that matches providers to consumers. Approximately 73% of Placer County IHSS consumers have family members providing for their care. The majority of the remaining consumers seek assistance from the Public Authority Registry to find a care provider. HHS will continue to work collaboratively with the Older Adult Advisory Commission to advance the county's plan to meet the needs of a growing senior population. I look forward to providing your board with future updates annually. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jamie Horning, current Chair of the Older Adult Advisory Commission and Senior First Board President.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman Euler and members of the board. This report marks the 15-year anniversary of the Placer County Older Adult Advisory Commission, also known as the OAAC. During our 15th year, the OAAC has continued to be actively involved in various organizational, advocacy, legislative, and educational activities. I would like to highlight a few of our accomplishments. OAAC members have continued to be instrumental in the development and implementation of Placer County's Aging and Disability Resource Connection, also known as ADRC. An ADRC is a collaborative effort to streamline access to long-term services and support options for older adults and individuals with disabilities. I am proud to share that Placer County was certified as a state-designated ADRC in December 2018, making us seventh in the state with this designation. Services in Placer County that are currently available include information assistance and referral, short-term service coordination, person-centered transition support, and options counseling. Commission members also participated in Agency on Aging Area 4's community-centered work groups assessing older adult needs. We determined that a priority for focus during the 2019-20 year would be improving the delivery of information to bring awareness to wide-ranging programs and services already in existence in Placer County. This focus was determined based on priorities addressed in the Placer County Health and Human Services Department's five-year plan and findings from needs assessments completed in 2016 and 17. Thanks to funding from Agency on Aging Area 4, in July, we kicked off an awareness campaign called Senior411.org. The objective of this campaign is to raise awareness of and participation in the extensive resources, programs, and services available in Placer County. In order to reach as many as possible, we are advertising in print and social media ads, radio spots, on bus panels, community access television, and digital billboards. We have also worked closely with the Information and Assistance Team at Seniors First to provide a more robust version of the Placer County Resource Guide to include Placer County's Emergency Alert System and all adult system of care programs, nonprofits, and other vital services currently available. I am pleased to share on behalf of Seniors First, on this World Suicide Prevention Day, the back cover of the guide will be Placer County Suicide Awareness Information Hotline, and I've passed out a sample of the new resource guide that's on the press as we speak. Continuing through 2020, we will hold town hall meetings, attend health fairs, and other speaking opportunities throughout all areas of Placer County. As you can see, our 15th year was a productive year, and we have big plans for the 16th. Myself and my fellow commission members are dedicated, driven, and committed to the continued success of the OAAC and support of the population we serve. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. All right. Board members, have any questions or comments before I open it up to any members of the public that might want to address us? Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Colby and Jamie, for bringing this forward. I have an older brother that's a member of the senior population. I just want to let you know.
You'll get there someday. Someday.
But, no, really, thank you. I know when we have people call us, our office, we reach out to Seniors First to find resources. Beverly does that for me. And Eldon Lewis, I see you in the audience. This guy has been a champion for seniors for as long as I've been on the board and probably before that. So, I just appreciate all the work you do and appreciate particularly Eldon, and he's been kind of my mentor and reminds me of the role that I need to take. So, thank you very much.
All right. Any members of the public want to address the board on this item? And seeing none, our board is being asked to accept both the 2018-19 Older Adult Advisory Commission Annual Report as well as the Five-Year Plan for Meeting the Needs of Growing Senior Population in Placer County. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second gor, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. All right, our 9:35 timed item, this is a Public Works item, South Placer Wastewater Authority Connection Fee Annual Adjustment.
Good morning, Chairman Euler and board members. My name is Jared Deck. I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Engineering Division to present the South Placer Wastewater Authority Annual Connection Fee Adjustment. As stated on the board memo, we are requesting the board open a public hearing to approve an amendment to the ordinance adjusting the connection fees, which are included in the staff report. This adjustment will affect Sewer Maintenance District 2, Sewer Maintenance District 3, County Service Area 28, Zone A3, and 173. In 2006, the SBWA Board authorized that the regional fee would be adjusted on July 1st of each year based on the construction cost index of the proceeding May, as published in the ENR. These adjustments are utilized to help fund future wastewater treatment plant expansion. The current connection fee in this district, these districts, is $9,322 per equivalent dwelling unit, which includes $1,468 per EDU for the local component and $7,854 per EDU for the regional component. The current connection fee will be increased based off of July 1st SBWA approval of the regional component, which will be increased to $8,037. Requested the board approve this direct cost of providing service, which will increase the total connection fee to $9,505. In order to move forward, I requested the board open a public hearing to adopt the ordinance amendment to Section 13.12.350 of the Placer County Code. If you have any questions, I will address them now.
All right. Board members, have any questions? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing in order to consider public testimony. Any members of the public want to address the board prior to us taking action on this proposed fee increase? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. We're being asked to both adjust the fee and make associated findings. We can do that in one motion?
And it's adopting an ordinance to do so.
I'm sorry?
Adopting an ordinance to reduce those fees.
Okay. So, adopting the ordinance, modifying the fees, and the associated finding. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion gor, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. First Department had item, Sheriff. I'm going to play with our whirlybird.
It's flying through this thing today.
Was that a pun? You're here to talk about the helicopter?
I'm sorry, I don't hear well.
Huh? I asked if that was a pun. If that was a pun. You're here to talk about the helicopter, and you say we're flying through this.
I'm not that quick, sir.
Oh, okay.
But now that you mention it, yeah, sure. It was great. Good morning, Chairman Euler, member of the board, members of the board, Mr. Leopold, Ms. Schwab, Mark Jackman of the Placer County Sheriff's Office, here to talk to you today about increasing our BPO for the helicopter services, previously approved in the budget, but specifically today, I'm requesting your approval to increase the current contract with DFC Incorporated Doing Businesses Advanced Helicopter Services out of Woodland, California, for helicopter maintenance and equipment upgrade services in the amount of $920,000 for revised maximum amount of $1,170,000. Funding is in the recommended budget, which is coming to your board, I believe, later this month for the final budget, and also seeking your authorization for the purchasing manager to sign any required documents and authorize any required change orders up to a maximum amount of $170,000. To refresh your memory, this is, we bought the helicopter 10 years ago, so a supplemental request came forward to your board this year requesting $920,000 to replace the FLIR, replace some mapping systems, all outdated equipment that's been on the helicopter for about 10 years now. Happy to answer any questions.
Board members, have any questions? Supervisor Holmes?
I read in the staff report that there's a contract with someone on site at the Auburn Airport.
Advanced Helicopter does keep, does keep, yes, mechanics at the Auburn, at the Auburn Airport. So we don't have to go to Woodland for everything, correct?
So do they also take care of CHP and the other helicopters?
I don't know who they contract with, sorry.
So they're there every day, or just when?
I believe they're on-site, yes, with Advanced Helicopter. That's one of the main reasons we've gone with them, because they're out of Woodland, but they maintain their maintenance folks up here at the airport as well.
So there wasn't ACME helicopter service or anything that you could find?
Not aware.
Any questions of a serious nature? No, okay. So, we're going to go ahead. Opening up the public, any members of the public wish to address the board on this? Seeing none, it's the pleasure of the board. Motion Holmes, second gor, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. ACME helicopter. Coyote piloting it. All right. Facilities Management, Public Works, if you see, you're next. You can just go ahead and step on up. There you go. You don't have to wait for me to call the item. You can step right on forward. Morning, Steve?
Good morning. I'm Steve Newsom, Director of Facilities Management. And about three years ago, I came before you all and did a presentation on our kind of behind-the-scenes energy-saving measures that we've been doing for many years now, and that resulted in about $1 million less per year that we pay in utilities across the county. And a lot of that stuff is unseen things, but I'm going to bring an item this morning to you that will be very much seen if approved. This is a photovoltaic power purchase agreement. I'm going to walk you through this presentation here. Background, back in October, your board approved an issuance of an RFP, and with the plan for some of our major energy-using buildings, our larger buildings with larger parking lots, to be the candidates for potential PV systems to be installed, and they're listed here. Then, as part of that process, we received- Then, as part of that process, we received 11 submittals, all from very qualified firms. We narrowed that list, did our interviews and so forth, and our selection panel chose NG Services to move forward with them. They're the number-one supplier of energy services in the world. They have over 250 megawatts of solar projects in California with public entities, and they have worked with over 500 agencies in the U.S. And the agreement that we will enter into would be with their affiliated entity, which is California Solar III LLC. Moving on, more of our background here. They did a very good job with their presentation, and they gave us two options. We, you know, basically requested, "Come with your ideas for how this would work." So, they gave us two options, a tax-exent lease purchase or a power purchase agreement. And our goal was to not have a capital outlay, and so these two options were very viable. We reviewed the pros and cons of both of them, and I solicited the input of our auditor controller, and we all came to the conclusion that a power purchase agreement was the way to go. If you're not familiar with a power purchase agreement, basically, it is an agreement where the solar panels and the structure that holds them is owned by NG, and we agree to buy every ounce of energy that those panels will make throughout the lifetime of the agreement. And the way it's structured that way, there are tax incentives that we, as a public entity, can't benefit from, but a private entity can, and then that savings is passed along to us. So, that's generally how a PPA works. So, any kind of savings that we calculate now is based on assumptions looking out into the future, and what we can assume escalations in utility company rates would be what the degradation of the panels would be over time due to the UV exposure and so forth. But we feel very confident that we would be saving at least $5 million during the life of this agreement, and with the opportunity to save much more if at one of these points we're able to purchase the systems outright, and I'll talk about that in a second. So, the responsibility for designing, permitting, constructing, operating, and maintaining the systems will be on NG throughout the term of the agreement. It would be a 20-year agreement, and there would be several buyout options, as I mentioned a moment ago, at years seven, 12, and 20. And there may be others too as we move along. They would retain all the tax benefits, as I stated earlier, and we would produce, or we would purchase all of the power produced by the systems, very straightforward, typical power purchase agreement. The, what we, in the end, agreed upon was that any projections of savings at this time would be based on a 4% annual increase in PG&E's rates and a 1% annual increase in the Roseville City Electric, you know, rates. And that came from Roseville Electric, that number. We'll see. I think it's very conservative. I think we'll see something greater than that as we move forward. And then a .4% annual degradation factor for the panels that they're proposing, and that's something that is very predictable based on just testing and so forth over the years. Now, the rate that we're going to agree to, to pay for the electricity produced by these panels, will have zero escalation through that 20-year term. So, we're agreeing to a rate, and it will not go up during the term of the agreement. So, that's a good thing for us. Now, part of this, because these, all of these panels that we're proposing will be carport-style panels, so they'll be in parking lots, and in some instances, they block some of the security cameras that look out, excuse me, out into parking lots. And so, we worked with the sheriff's office as well as Sonatrol, our camera provider, and we've had to make some changes in camera locations as well as purchase of additional cameras as part of this. And then, the permitting costs, the camera installation, management time, et cetera, is about $275,000, which the county would be responsible for. The locations on the PCGC campus, I worked very closely as we were developing the master plan, excuse me, and we obviously don't want to put, you know, construction in a location that we're going to have to remove if we implement areas of the master plan, so that was worked out. And another aspect of this is that these, because these are energy-saving panels being put into an existing parking lot, they're exempt from CEQA per the part of CEQA that's listed here. I won't read that to you. So, here's the pretty pictures part of it. This is the CDRC building as well as the FAB building. You can see the proposed locations of the panels that are outlined in red. So, this would cover most of the parking spaces at both of those locations. The perimeter areas of parking were not utilized because there's more mature trees that are there that would have to be removed because they would provide shade over the panels, as well as emergency vehicle access to the buildings. We didn't want to impede that as well. The, you'll note here on the right, it shows the estimated electricity offset that the panels will provide. That doesn't mean that we're using less electricity, it has nothing to do with that, but what it means is that we're going to be paying less for 78% of the electricity that we do use at CDRC, as well as 37% of electricity at the FAB. So, moving forward, this is the Auburn Justice Center. You see the locations there in that staff parking lot, and then to the right of the Auburn Jail. Those systems there are smaller due to just land constraints. Now, moving down to Rockland, this is 1000 Sunset. You can see the locations there, and that will offset about 86% of the energy that's used at that facility. When you look at this and you see the rooftop of this building, you think, why would we not put panels up there? And we did look into doing that, but due to the differences in age of our roofs at a lot of these buildings, they're going to be on different schedules for replacement. So, what we would be doing in many cases, because this is not scheduled to be replaced in, is we'd be putting a system on, and then at the point when we want to replace the roof, we'd be removing that system, so it would be out of commission, there'd be an expense for that, et cetera. So, we opted to not do that. Where we are doing a new building, like the morgue, we are putting rooftop systems on there because the lifespan of the panel and the lifespan of a brand-new roof are similar enough, and we should expect to get 20, 25 years out of the roof system there. So, that makes more sense than these other locations. This is the Santucci Justice Center. Bottom left shows Building B and the layout of the panels there. And then, the upper, very large array up there will be serving the jail. And there are two meters at the jail. The jail is a 24/7 facility, so this is a huge array that's installed there. And so, you'll see that it's offsetting 61% and 81% of the energy used at those two meters in that location. We're not providing any power for the court system there. However, we did work very closely with the JCC in developing this and getting their feedback. So, this is what we can expect. This is a kind of a typical photo of a system under construction here. This is before paint was applied, but it'll illustrate a few things that, we're not losing any parking spaces, as this shows, that the column locations are in spots that do not impact parking. We have a kind of a minimum height, the low point of any of the structure of the panels at 10 feet. So, you know, larger trucks and so forth can get under those more easily. And then, we will have, where we have current typical parking lot lighting on a pole, we're going to change to a lighting system that will be under the panels. This will provide a lot of benefits to us. I'll show you here in this image. The lights are under the panels, so one, as you can see here in this picture, the dark sky that, you know, everyone, you know, benefits from seeing the Milky Way and whatnot when we don't have so much light pollution, that'll be improved at these parking lots. And these are going to be highly energy-efficient LED lights, and there'll be two-level lights, meaning that the light they put out will be very slight, but they'll have motion sensors on them, and so if anyone walks to their car or a car is approaching, they'll, the level will increase, and, you know, for energy savings. But also, I think it will help when people are going out and it's to their car and it's dark and winter, and if they see that area is lit up, they'll know that someone is there or was there, and, you know, they'll maybe be a little more alert of what's going on there. So, late-breaking news for you this morning, I know you're already captivated by this presentation, but our vendor NG, who's here in the audience, brought to our attention an aspect of the contract that they requested to have a modification made. And I would like to thank our county council and our risk management department because they both reviewed these changes, and they're changes in the liability language. They reviewed these and approved them, but the penalty that they're making me pay is to read to you this amendment to the agreement and also the resolution that you'll receive. So, if I can read this to you, bear with me. So, Article 15, the limitation of liability in the agreement, would now be reading, "Limitation of liability, except as otherwise provided in this agreement. Neither party will be liable for any special punitive, exemplary, indirect, or consequential damages, or losses, or damages for lost revenue or lost profits, whether foreseeable or not, arising out of or in connection with this agreement. Notwithstanding any provision of this agreement to the contrary, suppliers' maximum liability under this agreement shall not exceed twice the aggregate revenue for the expected sale of energy output for the contract year corresponding to the year in which customer initially claims damages." This really has to do with the fact that we're going to have eight agreements for each of the meters, basically, and if you were to aggregate the liability, it would be quite immense. So, that was the agreed-upon language there. And the resolution is changing slightly too. So, to continue my oration here for you, the resolution will now read, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Placer County Board of Supervisors hereby authorizes the Director of Facilities Management or designee to execute the power purchase agreements and site license agreements with operator on file with the clerk of the board with the indemnity revisions read into the record on September 10, 2019, including but not limited to applications, payment requests, contracting with the county's vendor for necessary security camera installation on said systems, and such other related activities as may be necessary for the completion of the aforementioned project." So, those are the two changes that will be, that I'm requesting approval on, and as I stated before, including the direction to sign the consent document with the judicial council, which has also been reviewed by county council. With that, if there's questions, happy to answer them, and as I stated before, we have representatives from NG here as well, if there's anything that you'd like to ask of them.
Board members, any questions? I don't see any. Any members of the public have any questions? All right. Do we have a motion on the amended resolution? Motion Holmes, Second Gore, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we've got a Women, Infants, and Children Program funding application. Good morning.
Good morning, supervisors, council, Mr. Leopold, and good morning, Mrs. Barber and Mrs. Wood. Joe Arsenath here today, Acting Director of the Public Health Division, and I'm joined by Sarah Hagan, Program Manager, who's going to present our item.
Great. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Hagan. I'm a Program Manager with Public Health. The action request before you today is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services to sign and submit our grant application to the California Department of Public Health for the operation of the Women, Infants, and Children Program from October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2022, for the maximum amount of $3,429,777. We also ask that you authorize the Health and Human Services Director to sign any associated agreements, subsequent amendments up to $100,000, and related documents with risk management and county council concurrence. The Placer County Women, Infants, and Children Program provides nutrient-rich foods, information on healthy eating, and referrals to healthcare and community partners. The WIC program serves approximately 4,000 participants per month, including pregnant women, new mothers, infants, and young children up to age 5 who are income-eligible and determined to be at nutritional risk. Each year, women and children in Placer County's WIC program have access to over $2 million worth of healthy foods from local grocers and program-issued vouchers. These foods are specifically targeted to supplement the diets of infants, children, and pregnant and postpartum women with much-needed nutrients. Mothers who do not breastfeed are also eligible to receive vouchers for infant formula. Research has shown that every dollar spent on a pregnant woman in WIC saves up to $4.21 in healthcare costs for her and her newborn. Participation in WIC also improves nutrition, resulting in overall healthier pregnancies, healthier birth outcomes, and better growth and development of our young children. The total year amount, the, I'm sorry, the total three-year amount of $3,429,777 is 100% federal funds and represents an annual allocation of $1,143,259. This funding is included in the 1920 budget for Public Health as well as the future budgets that will cover this contract. Are there any questions? We are happy to take those.
Board members, have any questions? Seeing none, any members of the public? All right. What's the pleasure of the board on the funding application? Motion Holmes, Second Gore, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. Moving on, Public Works, 1920 Local Transportation Fund Claims, State Assistance Claim, and State of Good Repair Claim.
Good morning, all. Will Garner, Public Works Department. This item before you has, actually, in past years, we've brought this to you in many items, maybe two or three items over a few different board meetings, so this year, we managed to put it all together on one big memo, so.
We like to address it once.
That's right. I'm very pleased to do that. So, this item actually is the approval of $9,550,740 in Local Transportation Fund, State Transit Assistance, and Senate Bill 1, State of Good Repair Funds. These, we're asking your approval of six claims adding up to this dollar amount, which will fund operations for Placer County Transit, Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit, and road maintenance. These funds will also fund the purchase of one TART bus and one smaller TART bus for our ADA air transit operations up in North Tahoe. These claims, when approved, will be, or if approved, will be submitted to Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency for their approval later this month. After their approval, then the cash starts to flow. In all, these funds represent 49% of both of the transit budgets for fiscal year 1920 and 8% of the road maintenance budget for 1920. With that, we are recommending that your board adopt a resolution to execute the fiscal year 2019-20 Transportation Development Act funds and Senate Bill 1, State of Good Repair Funds for transit operations, capital assistance, and road maintenance. And I won't read every one of these, but for the items 1 through 6 listed on the memorandum and in the resolution.
All right. Questions by board members? All righty, members of the public. Okay, so the resolution includes items A through F on our agenda. What is the pleasure of the board? What is the pleasure of the board on the resolution? Motion Holmes, second Gore, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See how efficiently we get through this without a wagon here?
I know.
Just move right through.
I think he's not watching.
I'm pretty sure he's not, yeah. But I have no doubt somebody will direct him with this comment. All right, well, we have concluded all of the regularly-scheduled, agendized items other than closed session, unless I missed something. I don't think I missed anything. So, we're going into closed session. County Council, want to take us out?
Boardman now adjourned to closed session to consider four items of existing litigation and one item of labor negotiations.
All right, we'll be back. Close session, so at this time, County Council will report out.
The boardman in closed session to consider Lloyd Jones versus Timothy Gualco under existing litigation. Board heard a report and provided direction. The board heard under existing litigation Lloyd Jones versus Derek Ternick. The board heard a report and provided direction. The board heard a report on Placer County Residents for Legal Compliance versus County of Placer and provided direction. The board heard a status report only on Granite Chief Wilderness Protection League versus county. No action was requested. The board also conducted a conference with labor negotiators and provided direction. This concludes closed session. Report out.
Thank you. For our meeting today, we are adjourned to our regular meeting on September 24th.